This is the annual town meeting of Monday, May 13th, 2019. It is currently 7:05 PM and we are about to start. Better? To start today, I would like to respectfully request everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a busy night tonight. We'll be going over a warrant containing 38 articles discussing $32,564,557. Today, the entire meeting will be recorded visually, audibly, and by audio. I'd like to first start by thanking the elected officials for being here today, the members of the Finance Committee. I see Representative Christopher Hendricks before us today. Thank you very much. Now, when you came in today, my assistants had for you a few documents what I'd like to go over, starting with the 2018 Annual Report, which you can also find at Town Hall. The 2019 Consent Agenda, which we will get into right when we start with the first article. The Consent Agenda is a form that is used to expedite our meeting in an effort of efficiency, combining eight different articles, which through my research has shown in the past history for the town, these eight articles do not generally have any debate, and I have not seen any opposition to these eight articles. Continuing further, you'll see the 2020 Recommended Budget. This is where that $32 million figure comes from. And then lastly, the actual warrant itself. I'd like to direct the members of the town, in reading the warrant, the very beginning on page three has the report of the Finance Committee, which is on the floor to my left. This is the Finance Committee's opportunity to give the residents an overview in details where they see the town now, and then how they plan on using this budget going forward into the future. This contains all 38 of the articles, and at the very end is the Appendix, which I want to draw particular attention to. Here, the appendix has five items in it. The first one is the parliamentary procedure, which governs us here today. My main rule is asking for civility and respect. In an effort to do so, I give the same back, and all I try to do is keep everyone in order so that we can efficiently get through this in a fair process for everyone. Second appendix item is the Resolution of Gratitude, which is thanking the members of the town for their past service in the prior year. The Finance Committee's recommendation is the third. This is where it actually shows the source of funds, where the funds are coming from. Article four is going, and we will get through it when we get to the particular article, but appendix four has the additional information of the actual changes to the zoning bylaws. And then lastly, Article, I'm sorry, Appendix Number Five is the map for the Hamlin Street I am not offended that no one here today joined the selectmen and I and the town clerk at the town meeting forum that occurred. You might have caught it potentially on the TV, but I just want to tell everyone that I am going to continue to do so. I've heard from individuals that they like reviewing it at their leisure, and that's fine, but I'm just throwing it out there that again, next year, if I am fortunate enough to be before you, I do plan on holding the same procedure of having that forum, where I recommend members to come, voice their opinion, find some clarification, because in my opinion, the town meeting is for concise deliberation, and my goal is to have that town meeting forum as an effort to work out some of the kinks so we can come here as an informed voting group. The last thing I want to touch upon in my opening here today is, this is my third meeting, and I owe a debt of gratitude myself to my predecessor, Mr. Robert Francis, who served this town as the town moderator for 36 years previously. So if you will all join me in just taking a moment of silence in respecting and honoring my predecessor, the former town moderator, Mr. Robert Francis. Thank you, everyone. So I'd like to begin by jumping right into the articles, and I'm going to draw your attention to Article Number One. If you will kindly also review the 2019 Meeting Consent Agenda. As you may recall from last year, in the use of this item, we are grouping together several articles here. It's Article One, Article Five, Article Six, Article Seven, Article Thirty-two, Article Thirty-three, Article Thirty-five, and Article Thirty-eight. In a moment from now, we'll be seeking to have this Consent Agenda passed in its entirety. That vote, if approved, will approve each and every one of those articles that I just Here, I'm going to again run through that Consent Agenda, and if there's any of those articles which any member of the town would like to be held and voted on outside of the Consent Agenda, I ask you to speak loudly, say "hold," and I will pull that from the entire Consent Agenda. So here, for the 2019 Acushnet Annual Town Meeting Consent Agenda, we'll be having a joint motion to approve all of said articles, starting Article One, Article Five, Article Six, Article Seven, Article Thirty-two, Article Thirty-three, Article Thirty-five, and Article Thirty-eight. Seeing no articles being held, I will put to a vote that all of the articles contained in the 2019 Town Meeting Consent Agenda be approved as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of passing the 2019 Town Meeting Consent Agenda, say "aye."
Aye.
Does anyone oppose the 2019 Town Meeting Consent Agenda? Hearing no opposition, the entire 2019 Acushnet Annual Town Meeting Consent Agenda, as written, passes unanimously. So we skipped one. Okay, moving forward to Article Two. Do I have a motion on Article Two?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer free cash to a sum of $10,000 to the fiscal year 2019 Snow and Ice Budget to cover a deficit created by winter snow removal.
Do I have a second on Article Two? All those in favor of Article Two, please say "aye." If I may, for Article Two, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. All those in favor of Article Two, say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing no opposition for Article Two, the article passes unanimously. Do we have a motion for Article Three?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to Article Three of the annual town meeting of May 2018 Omnibus Budget to cover obligations incurred in the settlement of the town's collective bargaining agreements and personnel contracts.
And thank you. Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation on Article Three?
The Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously in the amount of $50,000.
Do I have a second on Article Three?
Audience participation's encouraged.
Thank you. And I will accept the second from the audience, just shout it out. I don't need a specific name. Thank you very much. Okay, putting Article Three to a vote. All those in favor of Article Three, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any in opposition of Article Three? Hearing no opposition to Article Three, the article passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article Four, the 2020 Omnibus Budget. Here, this is a lengthy article. My proposal in moving forward is similar in fashion as I have done in previous years, as you saw in the Consent Agenda as well. I'll be going through the line items of the article, starting with, as you'll see on the top left-hand corner, Line Item 1110, Reserve Fund. So here, I'm going to continue through that entire article, line item by line item, seeking to see which items are going to be held for discussion and which ones can be put to a vote in one complete article. Thereafter, I'll ask for a motion, and we will proceed. So beginning with the reading of Article Four, is there any comment, deliberation in regards to Line Item 1110, Reserve Fund? 1113, Town Meeting and Elections? 1122, Selectmen? 1131, Finance Committee? 1135, Town Accountant? 1141, Assessors? 1145, Town Treasurer/Collector? 1151, Town Council? 1155, Technology? 1161, Town Clerk? 1163, Board of Registars? 1171, Conservation Commission? 1172, Soil Board? Continuing on, Line Item 1175, Planning Board? Board of Appeals, Line Item 1176? Line Items 1192, Town Buildings? Line Item 2210, Police Department? Line Item 2220, Fire and EMS Department? Line Item 2241, Building Department? Line Item 2244, Sealer of Waits and Measures? Line Item 2291, Emergency Management Agency? Line Item 2292, Animal Control? Line Item 2294, Forestry? Line Item 3320, Old Colony Regional? Line Item 3325, Acushnet School Department? Line Item 4422, the Department of Public Works Highway? Line Item 4423, Snow and Ice Removal? Line Item 4424, Street Lighting? Line Item 4431, CMAS? Line Item 4491, Cemetery? Line Item 5510, Board of Health? Line Item 5541, Council on Aging? Line Item 5543, Veterans? Line 6610, Library Department? Line Item 6630, Recreation Department? Line 6650, Park Department? Line 6691, Historical Commission? Line 2699, Miscellaneous? Line 7710, The Retirement of Debt? Line Item 7751, Interest? Line 1911, Pensions? And Line 1914, Insurance? Article Four has received no hold on any of the line items. Is there a Finance Committee rec, let me strike that, is there a motion on Article Four?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
If I may have the motion.
Pardon me?
If I, if I may have the motion first, please.
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion, sir. I move that the town fix the salaries of all elected officials for fiscal year 2020 and appropriate funds for the payment of said salaries and compensation, including the approval and funding of the town's obligations under the collective bargaining agreements completed in the calendar year 2019. The payment of debt and interest provide for a reserve fund and for the charges, expenses, and outlays of the several town departments for the ensuing 12-month period through June 30th, 2020. All as set forth in the budget presented by the Finance Committee and as funding therefore to appropriate from taxation the sum of $17,993,786, transfer the sum of $7,813,758 from projected state aid receipts, the sum of $3,373,537 from estimated local receipts, and to transfer from free cash to the sum of $462,515, and transfer from EMS reserve receipt account the sum of $519,252, and further the sum of $1,550 from fund balance reserved for debt premiums, all to fund the budget as recommended by the Finance Committee, as shown in the final column of Article Four in the warrant for the May 13, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. St. Jean. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. This Article Four requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Four, as stated, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those in opposition of Article Four, please say "aye." Hearing no opposition, Article Four passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article Five, do we have a motion for Article Fi? Just give me one moment, please. Thank you very much. Moving forward, Five, Six, and Seven is a part of the Consent Agenda. We'll be moving to Article Number Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,464,173 to operate the Golf Club Enterprise authorized under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53-F and a half, as set forth in Article Eight of the May 13, 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. And is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends this article unopposed.
All in order. I ask to put Article Eight to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please say "aye." Any in opposition of Article Eight, please say "aye." Hearing no opposition, Article Eight passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article Nine regarding the Golf Capital. Do I have a motion for Article Nine?
Moderator, I move to transfer from the Golf Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of cot path work, construction of forward tees, bunker work, golf cot refinancing or prepayment, tent replacement and/or necessary and proper capital expenditures approved by the Golf Management Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends this article unopposed.
And would anyone like to be heard on Article Nine? Put it to a vote. All those in favor of Art-
I'd just like to know what that is, the golf, that is.
May that be dealt with summarily.
So, the golf course has been in existence for quite some time now, and we're starting to see some decrepitation of the facilities there and the golf paths and things of that nature. So all this is, is from the reserve fund, the surplus account that the golf course has and maintains. It's not taxation. It's all from golf fees, and all we're looking to do is place $150,000 in the account throughout the year. So if we need to make capital improvements as needed, we don't need to go to town meeting vote. It's being approved tonight, up to $150,000, and it would require a vote of the Golf Committee members, but also the Board of Selectmen before any expenditures can take place out of this $150,000. It's a surplus spending, and all this is, is a line item to give the freedom for the town if we end up with an emergency use that we can spend without holding a special town meeting. It will not be spent unless the Board of Selectmen and the Golf Committee agree to the expenditures, and that's the way it's written.
Do you have any further questions, Ms.? I would just ask that you go to the-
I've been at the course all my life, but I kind of understand all that. It's all under your voice, and I know I shouldn't speak up, but does your playground for the Acushnet Elementary School, is that what under your voice?
Yes, Ms. I'm just going to ask you, if you do want to find out additional information regarding the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, to please reach out to the Selectmen officials. Now is not the appropriate time to go over all of the details, but thank you very much for your question.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, if I could just hit one, one more thing. This is just for the golf course. This has not to do, anything to do with the school department. We redid their parking lot and their, and their playground on the elementary school because of some flooding issues and bankman issues, and we had to take down their playset because it was a danger to some of our children, the small children, so I'm sure that the school department is gonna be taking a look at replacing that playground set as soon as they have the funds available. The school committee is here to comment on that, but it's not something in this article, so.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on Article Nine? If you could just go to the mic, please, just so we can get everyone regimented. It's right behind you, sir. If I could just have your name, so we have it for the record, that you're a town resident also.
Yes, Scott Verblett, Mendel Road. I was just wondering if those repairs were, did to be done, would they go out to bid or would they be done by Acushnet officials?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm sorry to do this to you, sir, but I'm going to have to rule you out of order, and I gave some leeway here so we could get things moving on that article, but here we're discussing just the Golf Enterprise Fund. I am sure the school topic will come up at another-
Not the school, I'm talking about the golf course.
He's talking about the golf-
Talking about the cotways and everything else.
Do we have an answer for the-
Mr. Moderator, I didn't, I didn't hear the gentleman.
If so, improvements were needed, would the improvements go out to bid or would they be done by town officials?
The what?
The golf course improvements.
Would it be done by the local town?
It depends, right? It depends on the scope of the project, sir. If it's something that we can do in-house, as most people know, that the Board of Selectmen are in control of now, the DPW, so we've utilized our DPW to do a lot of work in town to save the taxpayers an exorbitant amount of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the being in particular. So if there's anything that's outside the scope of our DPW that needed to be done at the golf course, we would then have to go out to bid, I believe procurement would say, anything over $10,000?
Is that chapter 32B? We'll do it in accordance with-
So anything over $10,000 that we would have to go out for procurement. But other than that, we, we normally, we like to try to do as much in-house work as we can, and we have an incredible DPW working for us now, so we have a great team there, and again, we've, we've saved the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we always try to do things in-house to save as much money as we can. If it came down to replacing the clubhouse that we call a clubhouse, but it's really not a clubhouse, it's just a modular camper, if it came down to doing something like that, then obviously we'd have to go off a bid for best price.
Thank you, thank you very much for that clarification, sir. Any further discussion on Article Nine regarding the Golf Enterprise Fund? Seeing no further discussion on Article Nine, I will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed to Article Nine, please say "aye." Hearing no opposition, Article Nine passes unanimously. Directing your attention now to Article Number Ten. Do we have a motion on Article Number Ten, the Sewer Enterprise Fund?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $695,987 to operate the Sewer Enterprise authorized under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53-F and a half, as set forth in Article Ten of the May 13, 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you. And do we have a Finance Committee recommendation on Article Ten?
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Discussion, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Just, just the sort of point of order, I suppose, that all of these articles are open for discussion, so if there are any questions, you know, we're putting these forward with limited discussion. If anyone has any questions about what an article is or what it means, you are the people paying for all of this stuff, so feel free to raise your hand, step up to the microphone. Every question's a good question, and we'll explain it to you, because I suspect if you don't know, there are people all around you that don't know. I know there's a brief discussion in the book, but if you need any clarification of anything in the budget, anything we're voting today, please feel free to ask the question, and we'll answer it, okay? No bad questions here.
Go back.
Can we go, I don't think we can go back. Go back to Article One, probably not, but.
Is, is there any discussion on Article Ten?
Bill Harris, Blaine Street. I was just wondering, this has to do with all our sewer pump situation things? Is it increasing in payment again?
Question is whether or not- Question is whether or not there is an increase regarding sewer relative to Article Ten?
Was there an increase in the rates? No. No, there was no increase in the rates. This is the budget for this operation of our sewer department. And there's no proposed increase in rates by the sewer department associated with this article.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. See, just like that, easy. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article Ten? Seeing no further discussion on Article Ten, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article Ten, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article Ten passes unanimously. If we can move forward now, Article Eleven regarding the Sewer Phase Investigation Program. Do I have a motion for Article Eleven?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $57,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund reserves for the purposes of conducting an inflow and infiltration remediation study on a section of the sewer collection system as provided for in Article Eleven of the May Thirteen, 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation for Article Eleven?
Finance Committee recommends this article in the amount of $57,000, unopposed.
And is there any discussion regarding Article Eleven? Seeing no discussion for Article Eleven, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition of Article Eleven, please say aye. Any opposition? None. Hearing no opposition, Article Eleven passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article Twelve. Do I have a motion for Article Twelve?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $21,200 from EMS receipts reserved, the sum of $125,500 from free cash, the sum of $42,000 from overlay surplus, the sum of $25,000 from the capital expenditure account, and the sum of $60,000 from water reserve for the purpose of the capital items as described in Article Twelve on the May Thirteen, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, and all accessory costs as incidental to the purchase and installation of the equipment aforementioned.
Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. And do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to be heard on Article Twelve? No discuss-
Gentleman in the back.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. My name's Dave Kalida, Nineteen Darling Street. I just find a couple of these expenditures a little expensive. Maybe it's me. But a copy and machine for $10,000 for the police department, I find that a little excessive. Also, mobile computers for $50,000. Now, I know the vehicles have laptop computers already, mobile devices. Everyone can use a cellphone to access just about everything. But $50,000, maybe if one breaks, replace it, have it fixed. But to just allocate $50,000, I think that's outrageous. And then speed limit signs, $7,500 for speed limit signs? How many do we need in town?
Fifty-seven.
How many?
Fifty-seven.
And $150 apiece?
We get the, maybe get the chief to respond to some of the good questions, sir, thank you. Get the chief maybe to respond to some of what's going on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Alves, Police Chief. Thank you. Those are all very good questions. We'll start with the copy machine first. Copy machine is networked through computers, so we have to run them through the computer. They're scanned. It's also used for the fax machine as well, so that's where the cost for that comes from. It's actually a computer, not just a copy machine. The next one, which was the mobile computers. The computers need to be changed out. This is the last year of gas-powered motors for our vehicles. We're going to hybrids. So, the throwaway laptops that we've been using for about a part of two decades, we can no longer use, so we need a more advanced computer. So, we're talking about equipping eight Cruises, and we're starting the conversion at this point. The $7,500 for the street signs, I don't know if you remember, but the Center Village, there was a lot of complaints about speeding on the side streets and secondary streets throughout the Center Village. So, we did a complete study in the Center Village. The speed limit will be 25 miles an hour to legally, properly post all those street signs, so that way we can actually pull people over and cite them for going over the speed limit. They have to be placed in so many feet of each intersection, and depending on the length of the road, they have to be posted multiple times. So, the cost of the sign, the post, and the installation for 57 signs comes to $7,500. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Selectmen Cabral?
For the benefit of the residents, all of the capital items have all been aggregated into Article Twelve for the town departments. But for every article that you see here, there's probably one that was eliminated. So, they're all in one place, just so we can get this done with one vote rather than whatever that totals, a dozen different votes. But every single one of these capital items was presented by a department head to both the Finance Committee, the eight members of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and we discussed each of these and confirmed independently the need for these items on your behalf. So, each of these items has been vetted, and we're endorsing these articles. We're endorsing these capital expenditures. The Finance Committee, independent of us, is endorsing these expenditures. So, these have all been considered, and again, for everything that's here, there's something we looked at and said, no, next year or the year after. So, all of these have been looked at on your behalf.
Okay, I want to, is there any other further discussion or deliberation regarding Article Twelve? Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for their question.
Mr. Moderator, does somebody in the audience with a hand up?
Ms., if you could please go to the mic and please state your name, so we know who you are, so we have a clear record, and I'll get that answer, that question answered.
My name is Alice Sumbeline. I live on 14 Reservation. My question is on the voting machines. Are we upgrading them? Or are we replacing them? That we need to allocate $30,000. Because due to the percentage, barely the town votes.
Sorry about that. Okay, my apologies. The election equipment, those are our tabulators, and they need to be replaced. Unfortunately, I've been taking other machines for the last 10 years from other communities that have upgraded to the new, to the new election equipment. I've been using those to correct ours, because they're not making the parts for our election equipment any longer.
Okay, so we've just been using other towns' equipment?
Yeah, we're using our equipment, but what we've been doing is using parts from other machines to continuously fix ours, to make sure that they're working appropriately.
So, $30,000 gives us three new ones for each precinct, or is that just one machine?
It gives us four machines. We have to have three, one for each precinct and one spare machine.
Thank you, yes.
Is there a bulky item pickup day? Because I haven't, there hasn't been one.
We do have an article. I actually asked the board to present an article for bulky item pickup that we'll get to down the road.
Okay, because I would like one, but I just didn't, there hasn't been one in here.
It's in here? So, yes, there's a bulky item for $13,000. I asked the Board of Selectmen to support the bulky item pickup. And the board agreed to put this article back on Town Meeting Floor, because I believe it's necessary. It's a service that we could provide back and give us something back to the residents, which right now we're spending $32 million, and we can't spend $15,000 to do a one-time bulky item pickup for our residents. I found that to be quite ridiculous, so the board supported it, and here it is in front of the residents now. I'm hoping that there's be no objection to it. It helps keep the community clean. It provides a service for a lot of people that can't get to the town garage. I know that there's a program that we run year-round, pay-as-you throw for certain items. I just think, again, $32 million budget, we should be doing this every year, at least one time a year. Allow up to so many items per household, so we're not, again, in one house with 20 different bulky items. So, if we do it, just do it once a year. Keeps the community clean, keeps the people happy. We give back to the community. Hopefully, the community keeps giving back to us, and, you know, we keep moving forward as a town. I just, I think it's necessary to do it. And again, it's a small service we can provide to all you folks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article Twelve? Okay, seeing none, motion has been made on Article Twelve. It's been seconded, and it's been approved unanimously by the Finance Committee, thoroughly deliberated. I'm ready to put Article Twelve to a vote. All those in favor of Article Twelve, please say aye. All those opposed to Article Twelve, please say aye. Hearing no opposition to Article Twelve, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving forward with Article Thirteen regarding the Highway Supplemental Road Repair Budget. Do I have a motion on Article Thirteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $250,000 from overlay surplus to fund road construction and reconstruction in accordance with the pavement management plan, including all drainage, supplies, police details, engineering costs, and all other related expenses.
Do I have a second on the motion? By the audience, thank you. And is there a Finance Committee recommendation on this article?
Finance Committee recommends this article unopposed.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard on Article Thirteen? Seeing no-
Mr. Moderator, if I could. So, again, it's an article I asked to be funded. We're using an additional $200,000 in excise taxes here to balance the budget. This is not coming from the excise tax. It's coming from overlay surplus. I've asked for this money because I think that we're budgeting with enough money already, and we're spending enough money already. Even though it's not being funded the way I would like to see it from the excise tax, the additional spending in excise tax, it is getting funded, but this looks to me, if it's overlay surplus, it's a one-year, one-time event. What this is really to do is to complement our Chapter Ninety funds. Most of you know when you drive down some of the side roads on a lot of our roads, they're falling apart. We can't keep up with the money that the state provides us, the small amount the state provides us in Chapter Ninety funds is roughly $360,000 a year. There's no possible way the town can ever keep up. And again, I think this is something that we ought to be doing to give back to the community and the taxpayers of Akushnet.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article Thirteen? Seeing no further discussion on Article Thirteen, I will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Moving forward to Article Fourteen in regards to several capital items. Do we have a motion on Article Fourteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $230,000 from free cash for the purpose of providing for the capital requests of the school department as outlined in Article Fourteen of the May Thirteen, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, and all accessory costs as incidental to the purchase and installation of the equipment aforementioned.
Thank you very much. Is there a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. And do we have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Thank you very much. And would anyone like to be heard on Article Fourteen?
Jamie Alves, 14 White Street. I'm just curious as to the curriculum adoption round, if I can get more information about what that consists of.
Hi, good evening. I'm Paula Bailey, Superintendent of Schools. The curriculum adoption is basically money set aside for curriculum programs that will be vetted out through teachers and administrators in the school department. We have not adopted any new curriculum in many years, and as you know, the Department of Education is constantly changing the standards, and we're trying to keep up with the Department of Education standards and expectations. And it's desperately needed in our budget. We have mostly fixed costs, transportation, special education, tuitions. We don't have a place in our budget for curriculum. So, this will be the first round that we can go to this pool of money when we make a decision, and we will be very thoughtful about that decision in terms of, for example, one of the things, priority for the school department right now is middle school math. The program is ending, so we have to give teachers a resource, you know, just to give them something. So, again, we're vetting that out through our teachers. They've been piloting different programs all year. So, it will be a decision that's made in collaboration with the administrators as well as the teachers.
Attempt to try to use my time up here to ask, and maybe a lot of people would agree with me, if it would be possible, if you could be so kind, if we could go back and maybe try to have a conversation on some of the items that were in Article Four, specifically the school budget, because I don't think a lot of people realized that if they wanted to talk, they needed to say, hold. And I think a lot of people have some questions about the school budget.
Ms. Alves, if I could just ask you, I am going to have to respectfully ask you to keep any discussion in regards to Article Fourteen as written. So, I am not going to authorize any discussion generally on the school budget, but if you can fit within the parameters of this article, I'd be more than happy to entertain it.
I appreciate it. It was worth a try.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Fourteen, please?
Yes, please. Rebecca Ashley, 34 Matipoiset Road. I'm looking at the roof preventative maintenance. I'm assuming that's for the Akushnet Elementary School building. If somebody could clarify that? Just because even just as of two weeks ago, we had a leakage in the fourth grade workroom. So, I'm wondering if somebody could give me more information about whether or not the roof has been fixed first, and then this will be additional preventative measures to making sure that once the roof is fixed, that we do not have any further leakages, because we do have those throughout the building. So, I don't, as a towns person and as a teacher, I'd just like to kind of maybe notice, be notified about the status of our roof, and then if you could explain the preventative measures that is written down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got a two-part.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristin Flynn. I'm the school business manager. To answer your question, Mrs. Ashley, this is money to fix the roof leaks as they occur. Last year at Town Meeting, the town afforded us a sum of money to fix the roof and the leaks as they occur, both in the elementary and the middle school. So, we've spent about $15,000 of that money year-to-date fixing leaks in both buildings. The roofs are getting older. There's a section in the elementary school that's over 40 years old, and the other, this entire Ford Middle School and the other section of the elementary school is probably about 17 years old. So, both roofs do have leaks, and they do require some costly repairs to keep up with as they occur. So, yes, that additional $15,000 is continued to refill the funds that we've spent so that we're up to a level of money to be able to continue to address the leaks as they occur. Now, that being said, being said, we are trying to address the older part of the elementary school roof. As I said, it's about forty-seven years old, and we are seeking, we do have an, an application with the Mass School Building Authority. We will know at the end of June if our project has been accepted to repair the oldest section of the elementary school roof. The other newer sections are not applicable yet for assistance from the MSBA, but if they do accept our project, they will fund it probably about fifty-five percent, so the Town of Akushnet only has to pay the remainder. So we're hoping to be repairing the oldest section of the elementary school roof within the next few years, and in the meantime, we'll continue to chase the leaks in both buildings with these funds.
And are there any further questions on Article fourteen? Seeing no further questions on Article fourteen, I will put it to a vote. Oh, yes. So here, the Finance Committee has unanimously recommended this article, and it was made and seconded. Any further questions? Seeing none, I will put Article fourteen to a vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed to Article fourteen, please say aye. Hearing no opposition to Article fourteen, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving forward with Article fifteen. Do I have a motion on Article fifteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of adding to the school district reserve fund for unanticipated or unbudgeted cost of special education as established by the annual town meeting of twenty-eighteen. As a sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash.
Thank you very much. And do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you. And if I may, what is the Finance Committee's recommendation on the article?
Finance Committee recommends this article in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, unopposed.
And is there any discussion on Article fifteen? No questions, no comments. Seeing no discussion on Article fifteen, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article fifteen, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article fifteen passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article sixteen in regards to the pilot agreements. Do I have a motion on Article sixteen?
Fifteen or sixteen, where are we?
Article sixteen.
Mister Moderator, I move this article as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
From the audience, thank you very much. Do I have a, give me one moment here. No, not necessary. Do we have any discussion in regards to Article sixteen? Okay. Seeing no comments, we'll move forward and put this directly to a vote. It is not regarding-
Mister Moderator, should, should, should we explain this to the residents every, yeah?
If I could get some explanation, thank you.
All right, so I'll, I'll explain this as I understand it. So, um, to the extent that there are future solar energy installations in the Town of Akushnet, whether those are solar farms or, uh, battery storage, we have the ability to meet with the proponents of those projects and negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. So we could negotiate with them a twenty-year agreement for what their payments to the town would be instead of a traditional taxation, uh, scheme, where we'd value the assets they have and assign a tax rate to those assets, because that can be very complicated, because these are very, uh, specialized installations. So it's easier day one, when they're trying to get the project approved, to say, "Okay, you, you agree that you will pay to the Town of Akushnet a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years, and that is our agreement." Uh, by approving this today, you are empowering us to negotiate those agreements, but they've got to come back before town meeting. Before anything happened, it would have to come back before town meeting for your approval again. So you're not leaving here empowering us to do something, and you're going to say, "How did I, how'd they get away with that? How'd they sneak that by me?" The project's going to have to come back to town meeting for specific approval of a, uh, of a particular plan when there is a, uh, an exact plan for an installation.
Mister Moderator, if I could just-
Please.
Mister Moderator, if I could just touch base on, on what Mr. Cabral said. So everything Mr. Cabral said is, is, is correct. It's, right now, when somebody builds a solar farm in town, we, we tax them based on what it's worth, um, by per megawatt, okay? And if this year, we collect twenty thousand dollars in taxation, because of the depreciation factor is so large when it comes to solar arrays or anything pertaining to solar arrays, the state allows them to depreciate and, and, and at escalated value. So the depreciation depreciates really fast. So if we collect twenty thousand dollars this year, next year we might only collect fifteen thousand dollars. The year after, we might only collect ten thousand dollars. What a pilot does is says, "We can set two thousand dollars a year and keep it for twenty years, so we'll collect two thousand over the next twenty years, and it'll maintain that two thousand over the next twenty years," instead of it being an exorbitant amount here. You use it to spend, and then ten years down the road, or five years down the road, you, you have twenty percent left of your value, but yet you use all your budgeting capacity in the year ahead. So it just allows us some room to scatter that revenue out so that it's easier to budget, and we don't take all the money up front and spend it, and then you have a shortfall in years to come. So that's all a pilot really does. And again, as Mr. Cabral alluded to, once we're done, if we, we would vet this process out on camera in a selectmen's meeting with, with the proponents, if the townspeople didn't think that they would agree to it, they come to town meeting, we would have to put an article on town meeting floor for you to accept that pilot program. If you don't like it, you just tell us it's not going to happen. We don't like it, we'll go with the regular, um, taxation. However, I, I've seen and read a lot of communities that have built very large-scale solar arrays in their communities, and they've collected an exorbitant amount of money in year one. Um, and it's the Tax Appellate Board, Mr. Noble, if I'm correct? The Tax Appellate Board has ruled in the favor of the solar companies, and they had to give back that money that they taxed on. So it's very detrimental to a community when you just try to go ahead and tax it the normal way. So pilots would allow the town some flexibility, and it's actually a protection to our residents.
Thank you very much to both of you for that expla, explanation. Any further questions or comments in regard to Article sixteen? Seeing none, I will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition to Article sixteen, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article sixteen passes unanimously. Moving forward to Article seventeen in regards to the fire department and EMS removal from civil services. I would ask, uh, for a motion to come forward on Article seventeen.
Mister Moderator.
Good evening. If you could please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Eric Aruda, Five Sherry Lane. Career firefighter. Uh, the permanent firefighters' local three-two-eight-one secretary treasurer.
Thank you. And do you have a motion today?
I do. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation, as set forth in Article seventeen of the May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen annual town meeting, provided that the General Court make, may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this position.
Thank you. And do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you very much. Any discussion regarding Article seventeen?
Governor Madara, six-sixteen Main Street. I'm just wondering, um, what the benefit to the town is to get out of civil service, because it seems like everyone else is in civil service. So I'm wondering to the benefit of the town for them to opt out of that.
Thank you.
Mister Moderator, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So the civil service system for Massachusetts, uh, the fire department's been watching it closely and, and seeing, um, how other fire departments are dealing with it, and how it affects the Town of Akushnet, uh, as far as their career, uh, department, their career firefighters. So the civil service is, been around for quite some time, and the system itself, uh, is becoming antiquated, and there are, uh, fire departments now that are getting out of civil service because they are putting their own protection, um, that civil service has, um, into their bargaining agreements, into their, into the unions to be able to support that. Now, for the Town of Akushnet, the Town of Akushnet is very unique when it comes to their fire department. They have, uh, career, full-time firefighters, and they also have call firefighters. Coming out of civil service right now allows the Town of Akushnet to be able to select Akushnet employees or Akushnet personnel or call firefighters specifically from, that are already existing in the Town of Akushnet, to be able to move them up through the, through the employment process to be from a call firefighter to a career firefighter. The way the, that civil service is set up right now, um, the people available that we, the excellent people that we have on the call fire department do not have an opportunity, um, to be able to be chosen as a full-time employee based on the guidelines that civil service sets forth underneath our job description.
Thank you very much. Any further comment, questions in regards to Article seventeen? Okay. Seeing none, motion has been made and seconded. No need for Finance Committee recommendation. I'm going to put Article seventeen to a vote. All those in favor of Article seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article seventeen, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article seventeen passes unanimously. Article eighteen has previously been voted on. Moving forward with Article nineteen.
No, we didn't do eighteen. We didn't do eighteen.
Didn't do eighteen.
We did not, Mister Moderator, we did not do eighteen.
Yes, I apologize. I stand corrected. Moving forward with Article eighteen in regards to amending the Old Colony Regional Agreement. Do I have a motion for Article eighteen?
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the amended regional agreement as proposed by the Old Colony District School Committee.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you.
Explanation for the residents?
Yes. Is there any, uh, discussion, comment regarding Article eighteen?
I'm in the superintendent, uh, of Old Colony's here. If he wanted to, there you are, you're hiding. You moved. Did you want to, did you want to comment at all on this, or while
I'll just tilt the mic. Mister Moderator, if I may?
Please, and thank you.
Uh, last year, Old Colony secured a grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to update our regional agreement, which had not been updated officially since our inception in nineteen-seventy-five. The language was, uh, antiquated. We brought all of our member towns together. I had the agreement, uh, looked at by the Department of Education, and then by town councils from each of our five member towns for review. Upon approval from each of the town councils, it's required that we make a presentation to each of the towns for an official vote. There's no cost, uh, or real major changes, but we felt that, uh, the update to the antiquated language was a necessary piece in making sure we're up to date with regards to how our regional agreement reads and is presented. Uh, it's post ed reform. Uh, the prior agreement was pre-ed reform, and that's the rationale for what's been proposed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moderator, just add, I mean, for the, for the benefit of the residents, we, we've reviewed, obviously, the, the changes proposed to the agreement. They're extremely modest. It, it, you know, I think our comment, um, it, in some ways seemed unnecessary. I know we're bringing the language forward thirty years, forty years, whatever the timeline is, but, you know, for the resident wondering what's changing, it's, it's really very modest changes to verbiage mostly in the, in the document. It's fair summary, yeah?
Absolutely. Again, we just want to be thorough and by the book, and we felt it was, um, imperative that we bring it before each of the towns, because while we could change language, that has little to no impact. Uh, doing it the right way is an important piece of the puzzle. So thank you.
If I, if I may, uh, have any of the other four towns, um, voted against the amendment?
It was approved by Carver and Mattapoiset this evening. Uh, and there's going to be a vote by Rochester, uh, a week from today, and by Lakeville on June third. We don't anticipate, uh, any issue. We've heard from each, uh, of their legal councils who made recommendations that we included in our update. So all legal councils from each of the towns have made their recommendations, and we've taken those recommendations and put them into place. So it was really a collaborative effort. It was not a unilateral decision or project.
Thank you very much. Any further comments, questions in regards to Article eighteen? Okay. Seeing none, I'll put Article eighteen to a vote, requiring a majority vote. All those in favor of Article eighteen, please say aye.
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 All those opposed to Article eighteen, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article eighteen passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.
I get this. You get this.
Okay, moving forward with Article nineteen in regards to the cable fund. Do I have a motion on Article nineteen?
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection fifty-three F and three-quarters, and establish a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable, franchise fees, and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The fund to begin operation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, which begins on July first, two thousand nineteen, and to further appropriate for the budget for year two thousand twenty, the sum of ninety thousand dollars for salaries and a hundred thousand dollars for equipment replacement, repair, and/or upgrade. Such appropriation shall be under the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I have a second on said motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. And is there a Finance Committee recommendation on Article nineteen?
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed, in the amounts indicated.
Does anyone have any questions or comments in regards to Article nineteen? Okay, seeing no one for questions and comments on Article nineteen, I'll put it to a vote, requiring a majority vote on Article nineteen. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have, uh, a loud opposition of-
Because nobody else is doing it, so I figured it might go over while-
There's one, yeah.
So we have one in opposition of Article nineteen. Okay. With one in opposition of Article nineteen, those four Article nineteen survive and have enough to pass. Article nineteen passes with one in opposition. Thank you very much. Moving forward with Article number twenty.
Yes, Mister Moderator, I move that Article twenty as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. And do I have a second on motion, uh, I'm sorry, on Article twenty? Second from the audience, thank you. Any discussion on Article twenty? No questions, no comments on Article twenty. I will put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article twenty, please say aye. All those opposed to Article twenty, please say aye. Hearing no opposition for Article twenty, it passes unanimously.
I thought I had, I thought I had.
Okay, moving forward, Article twenty-one is in regards to a change to the bylaws, requiring a two-thirds majority vote. Do I have a motion on Article twenty-one?
Yes, Moderator, I move Article twenty-one as written in the warrant. Yes, Moderator, I move Article 21 as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you very much. Is there any discussion, questions, comments on Article 21?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Maybe the town clerk, you know, it's her article, she can explain that to the residents and what they're voting on?
I'm not having good luck with this mic. Okay. Okay, the purpose of this article is to serve a couple of purposes. One is for an incoming select person, they won't need, they won't be placed in a position to vote on articles that another selectman has already supported or not supported previously. I think that that's a key, and I think our newest selectman, Mr. DeRozas, did see that this time around. The other issue is for the town election. Currently, the town election is always held on the first Monday in April. By changing it to a Saturday, it alleviates the schools having to kind of jump through hoops as they did so graciously with our last April election. This will allow for us to hold it on a Saturday, and hopefully it will also cause an uptick with the attendance. The other thing, being in the town clerk's office, for instance, we have Super Tuesday that is coming up March 3rd in 2020, and to have an election of that magnitude and then have the town election 30 days after that is quite cumbersome, including dog licensing, the deadline for dog licensing, March 31st. So it's really to alleviate a lot of issues that we have and hopefully to make things a lot more efficient.
Thank you very much. And just to confirm here, what Article 21 is specifically doing is amending the bylaws, changing it. So the town meeting will be now moved to the second Monday in May, and the town election is being moved to a Saturday after the town meeting. Any further questions, comments regarding Article 21?
Eric, you, 595 Main Street, real quick question, why don't we have elections for the town on Election Day in November? Why don't we have town elections on Election Day in November? I'm just always curious about that, sorry.
To be honest, I'm really not sure. Other than the fact to hold two elections, the state or presidential along with the town election, there is a lot of work that goes into each, and honestly, our town elections deserve to have their own piece of the pie.
Because I think that, there was a big upheaval about, like, nobody showing up for elections and stuff. I think you would have more impact if you have, you know, a state election or the presidential election, you've got all these people going in there for these elections, I think that would help turnout. Just an idea.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, I don't believe that you can hold a local election on the same day as a state election because you would have to have two different ballots, you'd have to run it through two different machines, unless the machine had the capacity to be programmed two different ways, which would probably cause a lot of controversy. So I don't believe the state would allow us to do it on the same day.
Hold on. Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Moderator, state law requires a town election to be held in February, March, April, May, or June. That's why it cannot be held in November.
Good question, it's a good question.
It was a good question, though, we had to look it up.
Okay, thank you very much, town clerk, town council, I appreciate both of you. Any further discussion in regards to Article 21? Article 21 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 21, please say aye. Okay, we do have a few oppositions. I do not feel comfortable calling it by voice. I'm going to ask for a show of hands in regards to Article 21. All those opposed to Article 21, please raise your hand. So all those opposed to Article 21, and please hold your hands nice and high so I can see them and count them. Okay, so Article 21 opposed. Now, if I may, for Article 21, all those in favor of Article 21, please raise your hands. I am satisfied by the hand count that those in favor of Article 21 have it, and it passes with a minority of opposition. And that passing vote meets the two-thirds majority requirement. Moving forward to Article 22 in regards to the net meter solar credit contract authorization. Do I have a motion on Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into energy supply contracts in excess of three years in accordance with the exceptions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30B.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion? Motion made and seconded, thank you from the audience. Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends this article by unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on Article 22? Any questions, comments in regards to Article 22?
Yeah, I could try to explain this, Mr. Merritt. Do you want to try to explain this? You're better at this than I am. You were hiding over there, you didn't think we'd notice.
I'm deliberately hiding.
Okay.
The purpose for the article really is to allow the town, through Board of Selectmen, enter into a long-term contract negotiation to buy net metering credits from some of the solar farms that are being placed, not only in our town but in other towns around the state. The state law allows them to sell the electricity that they generate, actually it's either through a windmill, water, or by purchasing, a lot of the towns are purchasing net metering credit that they have. They're basically selling us a dollar's worth of electricity for 80 cents. That's, that's an estimate, but it's very similar to that. We've looked, we've talked to a number of different companies, and we've actually entered into some negotiations with them to give us some forward information about what benefit the town can actually have. What we're finding out is that over a 20-year contract, the town can actually save over a million dollars by purchasing the energy from, the net metering, by purchasing the net metering credit from the companies rather than purchasing through Eversol. So it's really a good deal for the town.
Thank you very much, Mr. Merritt.
Mr. Merritt's the town's building inspector, if you didn't know.
Any other questions, comments in regards to Article 22? Seeing none, I'll put Article 22 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
One opposition. Article 22 passes by majority vote with one opposed. Moving forward with Article 23 regarding a requirement of direct payment for direct deposit. Do I have a motion on Article 23?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. And do I have a second on the motion?
A second.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeRozas.
So, ladies and gentlemen, this article's targeted at me because I'm the culprit when they send me a check for my big $322 a month that I earn. I don't direct, I don't cash the check right away, so the town's trying to avoid that, so they want people to cash their checks on time, so they're trying to do it with paper checks and just have people get direct deposits, so it makes reconciling their accounts at the end of the month a little bit easier.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments in regards to Article 23? Seeing none, I'll put, seeing none, I'll put Article 23 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 23, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 23, please say aye.
I didn't notice it was you.
Hearing no opposition to Article 23, it passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article 24 regarding the abandoned property registration, which will require a two-thirds majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24 as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article 24?
Mr. Merritt, could you please give a brief description of this bylaw change, if possible?
The purpose of the bylaw really is to try to maintain a certain semblance of continuity and, I guess, effective. But anyway, what we're looking at is being able to enforce provisions by people who leave their home, whether it's for closure for whatever reason, being the unattended, we're finding them to be a real public safety hazard, the lives of the neighborhood, which states it. This allows us to have a registration placed on the books by the individual, in most cases, the mortgage holders, which is through the banks, so that we can chase them, make sure that they come and maintain the properties, so that the neighboring properties don't work and have issues. We have found, most recently, that households that are being broken into, that people are, you know, doing things that they really shouldn't be doing in any household. We're trying to organize that, trying to make sure that they're boarded up and secured, that the property is being maintained.
Seriously? Which one are we on?
One issue, someone who, like, has been around town, just doesn't know how many we actually have in town. It's only possible without a registration to follow through and go after the culprits, go after the mortgage companies, because what they like to do is sign in the front door that says, you know, this house is very winterized, and do not enter. What it really does is it tells every burglar, break into us, steal whatever you can out of this building. The fire poppers have to go to a number of properties and puff out basements because copper pipes have been hacked out of them. The roof spotters have to go into some buildings because, you know, they're finding needles around the property. We've actually had solar panels stolen from some abandoned property, and we just think that this is a really good method by which, to control this, and it's something that we're finding in a lot of communities.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, comments on Article 24?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion to allow the town clerk to number the article in subsections to be consistent with the town bylaws. As you can see, that it's currently Chapter XXX. When it's inserted into the bylaws, it's going to have the appropriate placement and the appropriate number scheme to go into the right area of the bylaws, so would be the change. Not changing any of the words, but just changing the numbering so we can put it in the correct place in the bylaws. So that's an amendment to the motion.
So one moment, I have a motion by Selectman Cabral seeking to amend Article 24 as written. And what specific change? If you could just say that for me one more time.
To amend the numbering so it can be placed by the town clerk in the budget, in the, in the bylaws in the appropriate place. So it says right now, Chapter XXX. It's not going to be Chapter XXX when it goes into the bylaws. It's going to be, to be determined. It'll be in the bylaws as written, but in the appropriate place. And do you know where it's going to go, Mrs. Labonte?
Right now, no.
No, right now, no. Right now, we don't know, but it'll be in a good spot. It'll be in the right spot.
Okay. So I have before me a motion by Selectman Cabral to amend the numbering of Article 24 to comport with the existing bylaws. Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience? All those in favor of the motion made by Selectman Cabral to amend the numbers to comply with the existing bylaws, all those in favor of his motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Selectman Cabral's motion, say aye. Hearing no opposition, Selectman Cabral's motion to amend as stated is allowed and is made through majority vote with no opposition.
I think it goes Chapter XXX is what, I didn't even notice it.
Okay.
Oh, okay. This is clear.
Now, to move forward with the main article, number 24, all those in favor of Article 24 as written, one moment, please. Any discussion on Article 24 before I put it to a vote? Seeing no further discussion, I am now going to put to vote Article 24 as written in the warrant and as amended by the motion made by Selectman Cabral. All those in favor of Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 24 as stated, please say aye. I'll note the one opposition. Article 24 requires a two-thirds majority vote, and I do declare that the two-thirds majority takes for Article 24. Thank you very much. Moving forward with Article 25. Article 25 is another update to the zoning bylaws. Do I have a motion for Article 25?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 25 as written in the warrant and the appendix as presented. And I want to point to Mr. Merritt again, but I think he really hid this time.
Just one moment, if, do I have a second? One moment, do I have a second on, second from the audience, thank you. Okay. Any discussion, questions in regards to Article 25? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Henry Young, I'm the town planner. The planning board is requesting a town meeting approval to a few amendments to Article 8 of the zoning bylaw. These amendments are found in Appendix 4 on page 36 of the warrant article transcript. What you see there is where there are deletions, those are shown as strike throughs. Anywhere you see underlines with italics, those are amendments or additions. The majority of the amendments were requested and brought forward before the planning board by Mr. Merritt, the building inspector. The planning board is sponsoring these. We held a public hearing on April 25th to vet these in accordance with Mass General Law. The amendments can be summarized as follows. We have clarifications to improve the understanding and the enforcement of the zoning bylaws by the building inspector. We have a removal of obsolete or non-applicable uses. An example, that is the removal of the temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers which expired in November of 2014. A third category of amendment is lowering the threshold for site plan review. And finally, memorialization of an existing best practice, that practice being that various departments submit to the building inspector specific information that he typically requests prior to the issuance of a permit, and that just enables better, more informed decision-making on the part of the building inspector. Mr. Merritt and myself are here to answer any specific questions you may have. Otherwise, we respectfully request approval of the proposed amendments.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Any further questions, comments?
Dave DeVignan, 33, Ansel Way Drive. I believe the article's well-written, but can it be amended with a minor change on the floor?
The question is whether or not the article as written can what?
Can it be amended on the floor? Or does it have to be voted on as a whole?
Depends on the amendment.
I would say it depends on the specific nature of what you're trying to accomplish with your amendment.
Simply put, I just wanted to make an amendment to strike 3.3(c)(8), because it makes no sense to me at all. As an engineer, when you build a house and you have a road in front of you, you have a setback off that roadway. And this requires a common driveway in a house to be separated by 150 feet, which there's no logic behind it. And I think it would crimp development of retreat lots and common driveways and possibly force people into more driveways and do the opposite of what you're trying to do, which is get less driveway entrances from public ways and force them into a common driveway, which makes sense.
Okay, Mr. DeVignan, thank you very much. I'm just going to ask you to direct me specifically on the portions which you're referencing. We're looking at Appendix Number 4, which contains the language.
Correct. Section 3.
Looking at Section 3.
3.3, Schedule Use Regulations.
Looking at Schedule of Use Regulations under Section 3.3. And what is the specific recommendation, motion you're making?
Make a motion to amend the approval of the entire article, just striking Number 8.
So here, the motion would be to strike Section 8, which reads, "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of any principal structure served thereby." Is that accurate?
That's accurate. Thank you.
Mr. DeVignan, there he is. Oh, there he is. Where was he? Yes, I will, I will.
Mr. Merritt, would you like to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, if townspeople please that I speak on this. If the article is withdrawn the way it was read, then the town's forced to go back to the existing zoning bylaw, which reads not quite as clear and does say, "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of the structure that meets the construction standards here and specified." That's been in place since 1995, and it's not had any adverse effects on how retreat lots have been developed off of common driveways. All we've tried to do is kind of clarify the wording so that it doesn't really conflict with the next section, which is just below that, and kind of makes the two work in conjunction of one another. It's nothing more than a clarification of a bylaw that's been in place for almost 15, 16 years.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Respectfully, before I put Mr. DeVignan's motion forward, I'd like to respectfully request a recommendation from the planning board prior to moving... Just one moment. Yes?
Given that clarity, I would withdraw the motion.
It's appropriate, yeah.
Okay. And I will accept...
Because it sounds like it'd do more harm than good.
Yeah.
I think in the future, that should be revisited, though, because if it's already on the books, it's not a good bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will accept that withdrawal. I appreciate the comments, but I still must respectfully request the planning board recommendation on Article 25.
Mark Cenarizio, Planning Board. Planning Board does recommend this article.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cenarizio. Any further comments, questions in regards to Article 25? I have the planning board recommendation. This is going to require a two-thirds majority vote. Mr. DeVignan's motion has been withdrawn. Thank you for that. All those in favor of Article 25, please say aye. All those opposed to Article 25, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article 25 passes unanimously and meets the two-thirds requirement. Moving forward with Article 26, we have another matter regarding the bylaw, which is in regards to new storage or trailer boxes. Do I have a motion for Article 26, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 26 as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second of that motion?
Second.
Second made by the audience, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do I have any comments, questions regarding Article 26?
Betty Walker, Cushing Lane. I have a couple of questions. Clarification, the storage and trailer boxes? These storage and trailer boxes are not permanent structures. They're placed on the ground. They can be moved at any time. And if this passes, why do we need a site plan when the trailers are already in place? Also, if they have to be permitted, are they permitted by size of trailer? Are they got by length of trailer? If you're a farm, are you exempt from the trailer fees?
Okay, just one moment.
Mr. Merritt, can you be prepared to answer the questions?
So Ms. Walker put forward the first question. Generally, what are the requirements regarding sizes?
Well, most of the, the raw motor box is over the length of 40 feet. Most of them range between 40 feet, they range anywhere from 8 feet, 20 feet, maybe 40 feet. And the type of boxes that are used mostly in overseas shipping, after a little while, the state, our federal government regulates how long they can actually be used for shipping. So they're actually put on their lot ball, and then there are companies that take them and sell them out, just to get them out of usage. Some people actually convert them into dwellers. The problem that I have in the community is that there are a lot of people who do what they're asked to do when they actually want to build a shed, because this does meet the definitions of structure within our zoning bylaw. Their structure requires permits by the law that's been established by this town meeting. People who buy these boxes, they have them dumped on their lot, they can put them wherever they want to without any permits in place. This really poses a conflict with their neighbors, who may not be willing to speak to their neighbor, but who come into my office and say, "Hey, I just spent $40 to fill a permit and had a shed built, and they had to meet the setback requirements." I want to put my neighbor just walk on his lot, he's parked next to my property line, and I have no control over it. We also have people who put them on their lot and then don't ever maintain it, and they eventually become, and I saw, they deteriorate. The boxes are left open, water begins to come through to the rocks and floors, and then nobody uses them. So what we're trying to do is not only make it and allow use by having individuals who want them and click them on their property, go to the water selector, say, "I have a temporary need for this on my property, I'd like to apply to the water selector for a license to have it for one year, maybe if my house burned, or if I had some other issues where I need temporary storage, so it's going to be placed on the property by license." Or they can come to the building department, they can pull a permit as a structure and place it on their lot as a shed, as most everyone else in town does, to meet the minimum requirements of the law. This also prevents me from having to go back out to their property, send them a letter, take them to court, find them, which bylaws allow me to. And I just don't think it's right for most people who follow the letter of the law to have to abide and to be assessed, whereas those people who just want to place it, want to purchase them and bring them on to their lots anywhere they want to, you know, just stop that.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. I think you've explained it sufficiently, but I believe the second question on the table from Ms. Walker was, why do we need the bylaw if we already have a site plan for control? Is that accurate, Ms. Walker?
No, I'm asking, why do we need to pay, why do we have to have a site plan? Do we have to hire an engineer for this? You know, this is going to be more added expense, you're trying to save the town money, but you're trying to hit it on us, the residents. Now we have to pay to have a trailer sitting on our yard that we've had on our property for 15 or 20 years? Now you want us to start paying for it? Now you want us to have an engineer, if you require an engineer to come do a site plan on our property, and we have to apply every single year? Oh, you could have it here for a year, but next year, no. Now you could pay somebody to come take that trailer out of your property? That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. So just to clarify, if someone has a pre-existing trailer on their property, will they need to come forward and have a site plan filed?
Mr. Moderator, it does meet the definitions of structure. So if it's on the property and they don't have a permit, then it's there illegally.
Thank you. And then the last question I fielded was whether or not farms are exempt from this bylaw.
I suppose the answer to that question would be no, but it's, again, even farm structures are managed by our permit, place the object or the structure on their box, all the farms in town do it.
I thank you very much, Mr. Merritt, for answering the questions. I believe I recapped those questions put forward. Are there any other questions, comments regarding Article 26?
Deborah Madeiras, I'm just wondering, as someone who does have one on my property, how much this would cost? I don't see a cost affiliated with this, to do this every year. And just wondering if you can be denied, where this has been a structure for probably 20 years in my property, would I have to renew this every year? What will the cost be? And will I be told I have to get rid of it one year?
Mr. Moderator, there's two ways in which this can actually be done. If you have a situation where you need temporary storage, you go to the water selector, you apply for a license, you put the box on your property. Now license is good for one year. If you want to purchase one, and you want to place it on your property, you like a shed, you come to the building department, you pull a permit, provide a site plan, you locate it according to the bylaws, and it's there perpetually, and there's only a one-time fee.
And I believe the last question in there was, what about the situation where there's a pre-existing storage container already on the property?
If it's there pre-existing, it hasn't applied for a permit, it meets the definition of the structure, it's there illegally. That's the only way I can interpret it. Most townspeople can tell the other one. That's correct.
I have one more?
Oh.
If you could come to the middle, please. Thank you.
Can I go first? Since I'm here? Question for clarification, unless I'm reading this wrong. Would I be correct in saying that if I want to do something temporary, I can go plop one of those storage containers right on my lot line and then let it sit there and force the town to make me move it, versus somebody permanent who has to go through a permit, site plan, pay a fee, and meet the setback? So in other words, is a temporary structure not subject to the property line setbacks versus a permanent structure?
It's terrible.
Can somebody go and put a container right on my lot line? No setbacks and let it sit there for a year because they have a license from the water selector? That's what I'm asking. Because that's how I read this.
If they have the license from the water selector, the water selector are licensing it, you place it on the property wherever they see fit.
Yeah.
Sometimes there are driveways in close lots, there are driveways that may need a different permit with a setback requirement, and that would be accepted. It's really the long-term, the ownership of it is a struggle. Like I say, 90% of the people come into the town, you want to build a shed, they pull permit, they build a shed, it gets inspected, they meet the requirements of the setback law, which again, was something that was approved by town meeting for, by two thirds of the year, a couple of people here in town voted for. Just because, and even people who buy pre-made sheds and have it delivered on their property, still go through the same process. It's just the people who, for some reason, get these cottage boxes, or the old trailer boxes, and there's a lot of them in town, and they're not assessed. And, you know, I think that that's a detriment to the town. It has no real impact on me, and I'm not trying to ram something down everyone's throat that they don't want. I just think that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I think we're just trying to make a modification to the bylaw, which allows everybody to follow the same law.
My name is Nom York. I live on 861 Middle Road. I suggest that this article be tabled, because it's obvious, there's pros and cons on both sides. And so I think it should go back to the selectmen and whatever, to rethink it and re-propose it at a different time. It's obvious, everyone has an opinion, and some of it's agriculture, some of it isn't, some of it's for building. I mean, there are a lot of things that have been brought forward, and I don't think that here at this time, everyone with an opinion comes with a sound conclusion. So I think it should be tabled.
Okay, hold on one moment, Ms., if you could just stay there. I didn't get your full name, if you could say that for me loud.
I'm Anora May York, Y-O-R-K.
Okay, thank you very much. And you are here. You're requesting a motion to table the Article 26.
Can I ask her to clarify? I think she wants to indefinitely postpone it. Motion to table is to essentially lay on the table, it can be picked up later on. I think what she's asking to do is to indefinitely postpone it to another town meeting. She clearly said table, I'm just going to... On the table, yeah. Close, she gets a second. She will. Yeah, but what's the benefit of laying it on the table? You can pick it back up. I'm starting losing people pretty soon. This is, my chair of the finance committee, I used to do, it used to be standard on the seat, it was awkward, because the water selector just...
Okay, thank you very much. Now, before us on Article 26 is a motion to lay on the table or table Article 26. Do I have a second on the motion made?
Second.
Second from the audience. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to table Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay? It is too close to call, I'm going to request a vote by hands.
No.
All those in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hand. And please keep your hand high, I'm going to have to get a full count. If I may request some assistance from my tellers, I'd like a second set of ayes. Give me one moment. Okay, everyone, keep those hands nice and high for those who are in favor of tabling
Oh, she's, oh, she's looking. She's probably... Are they double-checking? Is anybody getting tired? I haven't voted yet. This is, this is for opposed, right? Yeah, it doesn't count. You should probably, you should probably have better job than this. I think this is, I think this is a good idea. I really think...
Okay, thank you very much.
He stays as the status quo is.
Then we get to vote it. Why is this one controversial one? I didn't see this coming.
So now they're gonna say...
I think, to be honest, it's sort of like fatigue.
All of those in favor of table on it. Right. So what's the count? It's never gonna happen. Hold on a second. There's only like seventy-seven people. They don't have a poll anymore.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we're going to do the same thing for those who are opposed to the motion to table Article 26. All those opposed to the motion to table Article 26, please raise your hands high and keep them up, please.
I don't know. How many were on the other side? We don't know. Hasn't been announced.
I don't know.
Mr. Moderator. How many were on the other side? You guys aren't voting? No? Okay. What are you raising here for me? I'm opposed to tabling. Let's vote it.
If we can just keep those hands high for those who are opposed to the motion to table Article 26.
No, it's not two-thirds. There's a big two-thirds, dude.
It's not two-thirds.
A motion to table is not two-thirds?
Motion, it is two-thirds, but it's not two-thirds, meaning they haven't got two-thirds.
No, it's fifty-fifty.
Yeah. So it's not on the table. Are we done? We're gonna vote on it. Are we done, or are we still counting?
Yes, you can put your hands down. Thank you very much, everyone. The motion to table requires a two-thirds majority vote. And if you'll just give me one moment, please.
I don't know. Nobody knows.
The motion to table Article 26 did not pass by two-thirds majority vote. My official count was forty-nine for and thirty-eight against. Which brings us back to the main article, Article 26. Is there any further discussion on Article 26?
Mr. Moderator, could I go? And, you know, I know there are some people looking at this as government's intruding in my life and government needs to leave me alone, and, but I, you know, I guess the way I look at this, and I guess the way I'd ask you to think about it is, imagine your next-door neighbor gets a forty-foot-long, eight-foot-wide, ten-foot-high trailer box and drops it on their property line in full view of your beautiful house and your beautiful cars and your beautiful garden, and you're staring at that every day, and we've not given our building inspector the tools to regulate that in any way. So I don't, I don't, the unit that's been there for forty years or twenty years, I mean, this isn't about you. Your neighbors don't care. They're fine with your unit. They're not complaining, they're not gonna harass you. Where'd she go? They're not gonna bother you. That's, there you are. This isn't intended to harass you, it's really not. I mean, this is, this is intended for the problems that don't exist and to deal with the resident that drops that box anywhere they want. And the neighbors are upset, and Mr. Merritt has no ability to do anything about it because there's nothing in the bylaws. That's the way I'm trying to look at it, not that government's coming to get you. So that's all I have. Back to you.
Any further, yes, any further discussion, comments in regards to Article 26? I will open it up first with the lady at the mic.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to request the possibility, I'm sorry, I'm Stephanie St. Ange, 515 Middle Road, that maybe, maybe it could be that people are, that have existing structures be grandfathered in in some way, where if they are not, if they are not, and no one around them is opposed to the structure that is already existing on the property, that they are grandfathered into what they are now. If they should add another structure, they have to go through the process of adding that other structure. But at this time, if they are existing on a farm or in, you know, a family's property, and they're not being opposed by any person around them, can they be grandfathered in at this time? And then any further structures that might be put on end up having to go through the process in which he suggests?
Please give me one moment. Ms. St. Ange is requesting essentially a motion to amend Article 26 to exclude...
Oh, she...
Pre-existing structures. Just give me one moment, please, to confirm that and put that language together.
Is that possible under law? You can't. It's... Not on the stage.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak to the audience while everybody else talks amongst themselves?
Yes, please do.
The county council is actually looking into something. So if I draw your attention to the second paragraph up from the bottom, it says, "All permanently purchased containers of this type shall require a permit from the Building Department, and all applications shall be accompanied by a site plan confirming the container's location on the property and its conformance with zoning." So in other words, the way I interpret this is, if you have an existing trailer, and it's bugging the hell out of me, I'm gonna go to the Building Department, I'm gonna complain, and you're gonna have to move it. That's how I read this zoning bylaw. Is that correct, Mr. Merritt? I hope that answers anybody's question out there with the existing, pre-existing, because I don't know if we're gonna grandfather in pre-existing, which might defeat the whole purpose of the whole article, because there's quite a few of them out there. But I'm here to tell you the truth, and if I read that paragraph, I just read to all of you folks in this room, as I said, if I complain and you're not in conformance with the setback requirements, you're moving your trailer. So it could cause some trouble with neighbors, is what I'm trying to tell you. And in some neighborhoods, because of the lots are so small, like the ten thousand square foot lots, ten feet away from your property line for a shed, that's kind of absurd, right? That's a nice-looking shed that you might put up versus some pile of junk trailer you're gonna stick in your yard because you got it for free from your buddy that used to be an old camper, and God knows what's living in that thing. And so, you know, it all depends on how you folks want to look at this. I could, I mean, people come in front of you, the temporary stay is one thing, but the permanent stay? Think about that. Do you want it on the side of you? If you have a farm, that might be different, right? Because in order to be classified as a farm, you have five acres of land, more than likely you're not gonna be an obstruction of your resident's home, and, you know, it might not be in clear sight. So that's one thing. But when you're in a smaller neighborhood and you're sticking a forty-foot trailer alongside your neighbor's house, I don't think too many people are gonna want that, right? And I believe that Mr. Merritt, the reason why Mr. Merritt's putting this article is because he's gotten numerous complaints from residents, current residents? Is that correct, Mr. Merritt?
Yes, that is correct. I mean, the first thing is there's only bylaws, or this particular bylaw was more of being allowed to have it as a permitted use, or is it allowed to be in certain circumstances? Right now, they're all illegal. So if bylaw doesn't have it, I'm still forced to actually go after those people who violate the law.
So, all right, so you gotta say that again, because that's important. So any boxes that are there now that are not permitted, they've got a, there's potentially...
In violation of...
They're in violation of zoning bylaws, they're a problem. So whether or not this passes, this gives them the chance to get it legal.
Correct.
Right now, there's no opportunity to get it legal.
No.
Okay. Thank you. That's important to understand, I guess.
This is the one that says something about wheels and all that stuff, right? It's not...
No, I don't think so. What's he doing out there? What are we doing?
I still think he's right, though. This actually defeats that purpose, because now we'll go after him, not be in compliance with that.
So the way you can beat the bylaw is just throw a set of tires on it, it looks like to me, and you'll be all set.
DeVignan, is there a question or comment?
Well, for the record, I'm not opposed to the bylaw, the spirit of it, but I was just, my concern here is that the temporary structure, to me, it's a way of circumventing, you know, the intent of the bylaw. And I wouldn't want to see some forty-foot-long trailer thrown along my property line right on it, because the selectmen gave them a temporary permit because they were pals with two of them. So I think it's gotta be a little, worked a little more, and there should be some grandfathering for people that have had something in place for a couple of decades.
If I may ask Ms. St. Ange if you could return to the mic? You were requested during your comment period essentially a grandfather provision for existing trailers.
Yes.
I'm going to direct you to the specific bylaw as stated in Article 26, and I'm looking at that first paragraph, and I will go over the changes. It's really the last sentence of that first paragraph. I'm gonna read it in its entirety as written, and then I'm gonna read the change. As written, the bylaw, last sentence is, "All storage or trailer boxes existing on the effective date of this bylaw shall be required to be licensed in compliance here with, within two months of the effective date of this bylaw." Ms. St. Ange has made a motion which would change that last sentence to read as follows. "All storage or trailer boxes existing on the effective date of this bylaw shall not be required to be licensed in compliance with this bylaw." I will read that one more time. The motion, if allowed, will change this bylaw to read the last sentence of the first paragraph. "All storage or trailer boxes existing on the effective date of this bylaw shall not be required to be licensed in compliance with this bylaw."
It should not be required to be licensed.
So, looking specifically at Ms. St. Ange's motion to amend Article 26, as I just stated, all those in favor of Ms. St. Ange's motion, please raise your hand.
Yeah, are we discussing that at all? No?
Yes, I apologize. If there is further clarification regarding the motion, please do.
So are they grandfathered contingent that they are within proper zoning? Yes, that's...
No, they're just grandfathered, period.
No.
I'm only saying this as long as it's, it's not being, it's not eyesore to the neighbors and that kind of thing. I'm looking for, like, I'm thinking on farmers, farmers and people that have existing structures already on their property that they've been using to put hay in, to put grain in, those types of farming structures that have been there for as long as they've owned their farm to be grandfathered in. I'm not looking for things that are in, like, the center of town, something being plopped on the property right next door to you. I'm looking at people that have had them on their property for a long time, grandfathered in.
Mr. Moderator, would this article require a two-thirds vote because of zoning?
Hold on a second. Selectmen Gaspar.
I think it does. Two-thirds, yes, two-thirds.
If I may, to, let me first answer this question, and I will get back to your question. The question before us is whether or not the proposed change is going to protect against all existing storage containers that are physically out there today, under the terminology grandfather. I do not feel comfortable making a determination of whether or not a structure is legally conforming or not.
Mr. Moderator, though, you've given her, you've given her a modification she didn't ask for, so I don't, I don't think the modification proposed meets her motion. That's not what she even asked for, so I'm not sure this modification's appropriate.
I am definitely open to make sure that it does get worded properly. So here, we understand she wants, what she wants to do of protecting any grandfathered existing boxes, and the question becomes, how are we going to do it?
If a structure is, has been on somebody's property for twenty years, and no one has complained about the structure being on the property, and it's not in, it's still in accordance to the zoning that we require in our town, and it is not an eyesore to anyone, and it's been on the, sitting on a farm for that long, or it's been sitting in backyard of somebody's home in, on a ten-acre plot of land, and it's been sitting there, can that be grandfathered in? I'm not asking for, if you have a structure that's in the center of town being plopped there, that's been there, and it's an eyesore and people are complaining about it, that's one thing. If it's somebody, a structure that's been around, that's been here for a long time, it's not causing any harm to our town, it's being used for storage for a farmer, something like that, that would be what I would consider something that would be grandfathered into this bylaw.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, if, yes.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Jeffrey Blake. I'm from KP Law, your town council, and as I sit here and listen to the, to the last speaker trying to craft a amendment, in my opinion, the amendment that you're after, I don't believe we could craft. The criteria that you're asking for, it's not an eyesore, nobody has complained. I just don't see how we can put that in a bylaw, and I'm not convinced, as you may know, that the Attorney General reviews all general and zoning bylaws. And with that kind of language in there, I don't think an Attorney General would approve that bylaw. As it stands right now, there are two different, in my read of it, and I think your building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, has just interpreted it as well, as well. My read is, there's two different types of structures and, or boxes here. There's one, the temporary one, that requires a permit renewed annually. And then, of course, there's the permanent one, which only requires a permit once. So those structures that have, that have been there for thirty years, yes, they would have to come in, but they would only have to get a permit, and they would then have to be in compliance with, likely at that point, the zoning bylaw. This is a general bylaw, so even if we were gonna try to grandfather these folks under this general bylaw, they would still have to be zoning compliant. So there is a, it's a little bit more complicated than it, than it sounds, and it's a little bit more difficult to draft legislation on town meeting floor. So in my opinion, what you're asking for and the criteria you've outlined, in my opinion, the Attorney General would likely not approve that.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, sorry for everybody for taking so much time on an article. If everybody just maintains the vote that they just voted, it won't pass anyway with a two-thirds vote, so we'll just get by, and then the Board of Selectmen will have to do a better job at cleaning this article up along with Mr. Merritt, and we'll bring it back next year, if that's okay with everybody.
I just, and just one more, Mr. Moderator.
The question.
Yeah, I agree, but just, one more point.
Please.
I mean, there are a couple of service stations in town, and there's one nobody complains about, and there's one everybody complains about. And the one everybody complains about, there's nothing we can do about it. So add a couple of trailer boxes to that site that we can't come, do anything about, and that's what this article's intended to deal with. And, you know, I see, see the, see the good intention in this article and not the problems you're imagining, and that's what I would, that's how I would suggest you vote.
Mr. Moderator, if you have a motion to move the question?
I second that.
Move it.
There was a motion on the floor to move the question.
There was a motion on the floor to move the question.
Absolutely.
It's time.
Move this question.
Absolutely.
If I may, who made the motion to move the article? Sir, your name?
Henry Preston.
Thank you very much. Motion made to move the article by Henry Preston, second by the audience. All those in favor of Mr. Preston's motion to move this, move this to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Do we have a floor?
Give me one moment.
Come back next Monday? Thanks a lot.
Don't do that. I think we do, yeah, I think we do, I don't know.
Oh, they're gonna count.
Thank you. Hearing no opposition to Mr. Preston's motion, the motion to move, move the question does pass. So moving back to Article 26 as written, requiring a two-thirds majority vote, all those in favor of Article 26 as written in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Going to put that to a hand vote for clarification.
What if it doesn't to 75? It passes.
Watch, hey, watch what the count difference is.
Just right, is there a quorum? You wanna take some more?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, by a show of hands, all those in favor of Article 26 as written, please raise your hands and hold them high.
Not right now. How is this working out? Why is Tom in the hallway? Get back in here and vote.
It's changed. There's more people racing in here right now, like they've built up a particle. That's very weird.
Look at Tom in the hallway, what's he doing? I don't know, he's gonna vote, alright. I got counted.
There's more people now.
This passes. This passes. But then you're gonna find it wasn't like there were 75, unless people don't vote.
If there was 49 that opposed to 21, so how many are coming up now?
Then we discussed it, then we discussed it.
It's crazy. They know that they're accepting the article?
Yes, I think so.
May put your hands down, thank you. And all of those opposed to Article 26, please raise your hand if you are opposed to Article 26, and keep your hands high.
I think it passed. I don't even know how this ends. We're back here next Monday night and try to get one.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, you can put your hands down.
I forgot his name.
It was John that did that.
Who?
John Gold.
Where's he?
Right over there.
No, I think it was the guy.
No, it was John, I went and talked to him.
He's actually...
By the way, he will not be tired to come back and do the taping, get $75.
The official results are Article 26 does pass with 53 votes for and 26 against. Thank you, everyone. Moving forward with Article 27, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 27 as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from the audience. Any discussion on Article 27? No questions, no comments on Article 27? Put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 27, please say aye. Mr. Phil, are you opposition?
Yeah.
Okay, Article 27 passes with one in opposition. Thank you. Moving forward with Article 28, do I have a motion?
Mark Sanorizio, CPC, I move the town vote to reserve from FY 2020 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the sum of $9,200 for administration expenses, 10%, $18,400 for open space purposes, 10%, $18,400 for historic preservation, 10%, $18,400 for affordable housing, and the remaining $119,600 to the FY 2020 Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve.
Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much, and do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends this article by a unanimous vote.
Any discussion in regards to Article 27? No? Yes, sir.
Article 29.
What article are we on here?
This is a point, David Flynn, 36 Pondview Road. This is a point of clarification, how can $9,200 be 10% and $18,400 also be a 10%? Is it just a claricolor, should it be 5% or the other's 20%? Because they both can't be 10%.
Okay, so the comment on the floor...
So if $9,200 is 10%, but you're also saying $18,400 is 10%, so two different numbers can't still be 10% of the whole.
10% is, goes with, no, the comment, 10%.
Well, it says 9,200.
It's 10% in each category.
Except for administrative expenses.
Yeah, just for clarity purposes, Article 28, it's the sum of $9,200 for administrative expenses, comma, 10%, which is the $18,400 figure for open spaces, another 10%, the same amount for historic preservation, and another 10%, the same amount for affordable housing.
That's right.
I believe that clarifies...
Administrative expenses are 5%, 9,200.
Yes. So as written, the article is correct. Any further comments, questions in regards to Article 28? Seeing none, requires a majority vote, I'll put it to. The finance committee already opined that it was unanimously agreed upon. All those in favor of Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 28, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article 28 passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article 29, do I have a motion?
Mark Sanorizio, CPC, I move that the town vote to appropriate for recreation the sum of $25,000 for the Community Preservation Fund balance for the undersigned fund balance of the Community Preservation Act to contribute to the cost of improvement, expansion, and reconstruction of the school fields.
Do I have a second on the motion? Thank you very much from the audience. Do I have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends this article unopposed.
Any discussion, comments in regards to Article 29? Seeing none, I'll put Article 29 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 29, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 29, please say aye. Declare Article 29 passes by majority vote with opposition. Moving forward, Article 30, do I have a motion on Article 30?
Mark Sanorizio, CPC, motion, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance reserved for historic preservation of the Community Preservation Act for the purpose of granting said funds to reface the facade of the Pottingway Building and all incidental and related expenses connected with the construction.
Thank you, do I have a second on the motion? Thank you very much. Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends this article by a unanimous vote.
Any discussion on Article 30? Questions, comments in regards to Article 30? Seeing none, I'll put Article 30 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 30, please say aye. Article 30 passes unanimously. Moving forward with Article 31, do I have a motion?
One more time, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $35,000 from the Community Preservation undersignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Act for the purpose of adding duckless HVAC units to the Pottingway Building and the town hall, including all incidental and related expenses connected with this installation.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I'm sorry, I can't wait.
From the audience, thank you very much. Finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends this article unopposed.
Any questions or comments in regards to Article 31? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 31, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 31, please say aye. Article 31 passes unanimously.
Skip 32, skip 33.
Moving forward to Article 34.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2020, beginning on July 1st, 2019, for the revolving funds established in town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or offices in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as presented in Article 34 of the May 13th, 2019 annual town meeting warrant.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you.
Let's moderate.
Do I have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends this article by a unanimous vote.
Any questions or comments regarding Article 34? Again, any questions, comments for Article 34? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 34, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 34, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, Article 34 passes unanimously. Moving forward to Article 36, do I have a motion for Article 36?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 36 as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second on the motion? Second from the audience, thank you very much. Do I have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends this article unopposed.
Any discussion on Article 36?
The only discussion would be that this body approved this article last year, and apparently our wording wasn't appropriate, so we're bringing it backworded correctly. But this is OPEB liabilities, the post-employment benefits for town employees, we're funding retirements for our employees anticipation, in anticipation of their retirement, and setting aside some money for that, so this is the article that sets aside those funds.
Thank you very much. Any further comments in regards to Article 36? Seeing none, I'll put Article 36 to a vote, requiring a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 36, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to Article 36, please say aye.
37 is the last article.
Hearing no opposition, Article 36 passes unanimously. Last article of the night, Article 37, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $263,209 to be added to the town's stabilization account.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second from the audience, thank you. And do I have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends this article in the amount of $263,209. The stabilization fund is a cushionist savings account for the future needs of the town. It is vitally important to the financial health of the town to provide for the future.
Any discussion on Article 37? Any questions or comments in regards to Article 37? Seeing none, I'll put Article 37 to a vote. All those in favor of Article 37, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed to Article 37, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 37 passes with opposition. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for your time in coming here today. This concludes our town meeting. Thank you very much.